All right, let's call this meeting in order. I'll rise for pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Adds, changes?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, we have several changes. We have one under 4F, number 4F on the consent agenda should be removed, the EMT appointment. And then there are three additional fire department hires under item 4I on the consent agenda.
All right. Motion to approve agenda?
motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Open forum. Anybody want to speak? About any, doesn't look like it. Onto the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, approval of bills, purchase orders, approval of investments, office assistant, three step increase, prorating, club license fee, EMT appointment has been removed, pay voucher number one, police reserve hire, fire department hire, that's for a total of five hires. Two that have been interviewed already, three that are going to be added when they pass all the background checks and stuff. Are there any questions, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I only have one question. Pay voucher number one, that was for to Mark Lee paving?
Correct.
What was, that was in regards to?
Fifth Molly's Hill project.
Molly's Hill project, okay.
Yep.
Motion and second, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're on to public hearings. On sale 3.2% malt liquor license and wine license request, Martinez Meat and Grocery. That is, they're looking for a on sale 3.2% wine sales?
Yep.
License. And city administrator to present the affidavit of publication?
Yep.
Public hearing notice. We'll open up that public hearing right at 6:03. Anybody have any questions or comments on that from the public? Does it appear to be, close it at 6:03 and 30 seconds? Is there any background information you want to provide on that, or?
Just simply that you, their requests are made by Maria de Lords Martinez, doing business as Martinez Meat and Grocery, for an on sale 3.2% malt liquor and wine license.
Good. All right, so we will move on to the next public hearing, we'll take a vote up on that later, right? 5B Warrior Boat Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. So if I understand this correctly, they originally built on the corner lot there, which was one lot, and there was four total in that loop, and they have since taken ownership of all four of those.
So, yeah, Lisa has some information for you, so I'll refer that to her.
Good evening. Before you tonight is a request to vacate the easement on a parcel owned by Warrior Boats. It was originally four parcels, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of block 6 out in the industrial park. They have purchased all four properties and combined them into one lot. And to make use of their lot, they would like to see the easement vacated.
Very good. And we have no use for them because it's all their property, so they have access, or the city would have access to anything on that property because they own all of the property.
They own all of it if we needed to put?
If they requested some utilities?
Yes, if we needed to put utilities in in the future, we would have to request an access easement for that. The Public Utilities Commission has reviewed it and sees no problem with vacating it, as has the Utilities Department.
Okay.
Thanks. Ms. Lee, so that doesn't affect any of the drainage on the south side of that whole block?
Well, there's no drainage.
It just looked like there was a little bit of a lower area there.
There might be, but it's completely their lot, so typically we wouldn't retain drainage easements unless they were significant, like, you know, where the Casey's where you've actually got a drainage pond. There's no drainage pond on this property. The drainage utility easements around the perimeter of the property are being retained. It is simply the interior easements that are being vacated.
I think there was a lot of drainage concerns a number of years ago from water coming across, as I call your old, it became 1.
Oh, okay.
186.
186 along the highway there.
Oh, okay.
But that wouldn't affect that issue anyway, because?
Yeah.
All right, I guess we have to open up the public hearing at 6:07 for any public comment. I guess we'll close, being there is no public comment at 6:07 also. And we'll move on to reports. 6A Police Department Monthly Report.
Good evening. We have our June 2020 report. In our traffic area, 26 citations were issued, 47 verbal warnings to written warnings. For June of 2020, we had 292 calls or requests for service. Last year was 347. We ended on ICR 1968, and last year was 2320, so we're down 352 for the year. 23 agency assists seems to be hovering around that low twenties range for the whole year so far, so that's consistent. Some area of note, we've been dealing with some noise-related issues related to dirt bikes, pit bikes, mini bikes, I guess they all have a flavor or name to them. We did have one individual that we have cited now with a state citation for public nuisance violations. There were four warnings given to this individual, and it's not related to the bike itself being operated on private property, it's the noise of the bike that's causing issues within the neighborhood. We brought a copy of the ordinance over there to explain this is the standpoint, or this is what we're covering, or the reason why we are getting involved with the situation, and it did not stop or change. So there was a citation issued this week to that individual, and there's going to be a mandatory court date because we went with a state route instead of a city route for various reasons, but, so there will be a court date coming whenever court opens back up for the full flow.
Will you have to be represented there?
The first initial appearance, they'll give their guilty, not guilty, or any of those sorts of things, so we won't have to be at that round. But if they choose to move on with a jury trial or any other sort of court-related action, then we'll have to sentence somebody.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions?
Nope, sounds good, thank you.
6B City Attorney Report.
Sir, I don't have a written report for you this week. Handful of items, been working on. Going to give you an update on the nuisance properties at the June meeting, you approved four abatement orders. The good news is that, you know, after serving those orders, three of them have been taken care of, and so they're resolved and those are done. The fourth one, earlier this week, I was hoping to be able to tell you that we were four for four, and it looked like the last one was going to get resolved, but good intentions didn't quite make it. So we're going to go forward with, you know, enforcing that one, and so we'll keep you updated as it goes on. So the next step, we're working out some service issues, but we'll get that sorted out, and then the next step would be taking it to filing with the district court and putting it on for a hearing. You'll notice that you've got variance request, and I'm sure Lisa will give you more details, but there's various projects going on in town, and they're generating some requests for variances. So I've spent a little time with the staff, kind of going through those requests and making sure that, you know, what they're asking for is appropriate under our ordinances. The last one, it's really more of an update, and again, Lisa might can give you some more details, but, you know, it was reported to the council that, you know, we had a bad manufactured home out in Rose Park. And the city's been working with the state, who primarily regulates these items, and the state has indicated that they're going to be taking action. My, from my understanding, it's mostly an administrative action that they'll get a fine for their act. The question then is, for the city, what do we want to do about it, because we've still got this building sitting out there? Looking at the regulations, this building as it's sitting out there qualifies as a nuisance. And so if the remedy you're looking for is fix it, or we're going to, or get it out of town, or the city will get it out of town and give you the bill, you know, we can pursue that, and it would be like these prior nuisances. They would get a notice telling them, here's your, it's a nuisance because you got to fix these, you got so much time. If they don't, we would come back to the council, have you issue an order like you did last month. If it still isn't fixed, we go to court and get permission to, you know, go out there and just, you know, demolish it, move it, get rid of it. I like those options because eventually it means if it's not fixed, it's gone. Another alternative would be to cite them, you know, with a criminal violation. You know, you would still have the court process. I would assume that these folks would fight it. The reason I like the civil process and the nuisance process is that we're looking for an order that says we get to get rid of this. When you go through the criminal process, at the end, you get an order where the person has been sentenced to so much time in jail, and they've gotten so much of a fine. What the court will do is they'll suspend some or all of the jail time in the sentence on conditions. And we can ask the judge to include getting rid of this thing or abating this thing. And the idea is that, well, you know, they got to do it, or look at going to jail, but if they don't do it, then we got another court date to tell the court that they didn't do it, and we're asking them to, you know, impose the rest of the sentence, you know, there's essentially a violation of the terms of the order.
This could, in essence, add six months to the process.
Yeah, I mean, I, none of it moves fast, unfortunately. I wish there was a way to kind of just hire a truck and go out there and do it, but, you know, we got to, we got to go jump through the hoops. Those are the alternatives. Like you say, personally, I like going the civil route because, like you say, we ask for the order that gives us the remedy we want, which is, it goes. I think the criminal route, it's always nice to have the judge tell someone they're guilty of a crime and announce jail time, but they never really go to jail, you know, they suspend it. It seems like it's more of a long way around for, to me, it seems like a long way around to get to the remedy we want. Wanted to put those before the council to just see what your feelings are, if you've got a preference, if you would rather that we pursued this through a criminal route to try to resolve it on our end, or if you would like to go, or you're okay going the nuisance abatement route. Trying to get some feedback from the council on how to get this, how you would like to see this resolved.
I think I agree with you, because if you go the criminal route, we could easily be sitting here next July, and we've been through failure to comply hearings in county court, and it's still sitting there. So I think the civil method is more efficient and probably quicker.
Any other observations?
Has there been any, forgive if I've just forgotten all of it, has there been any receptive communication on their part about any of this?
Again, I'll let Lisa speak to that, because she's been keeping a log. There's been multiple communications.
Is it all putting a wall up?
Pretty much. From summarizing broadly, Lisa's told him you're in violation, you got to do, you know, A, B, C, and D, and they say, oh, no, 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 the city doesn't have that authority, you can't tell me. And so then we went to another level of the state who backed Lisa up and said, yes, you have to do A, B, C, and D. And the guy still argued with, and now the last, they went another level up into the state, who is apparently their enforcement section, who said, you have violated A, B, C, and D, and we're going to fine you. He's still arguing with the state, so I mean, it's, I don't think he's, he seems to be kind of dawning on him that, well, maybe these arguments aren't, and that maybe we know what we're talking about when we tell him he's got to do something.
So the quickest route to go would probably be the nuisance violation?
I, I.
Cleanest?
I, in general, I think it moves a little faster. But again, going to court, and nothing is quick these days with court hearings or any, you know, they, they are allowing appearances, but now they're limited, and they're struggling with the same COVID issues, so everything just takes longer.
And the last time we discussed this, about a month ago, I drove by and looked at it. I drove by it today, and I don't see any perceptible changes whatsoever.
I'd say just go with the civil route, whatever that?
Nuisance violation route. Concur with that.
Okay, so like you say, the first step on that is we'll, we'll put together a notice, you know, that will get served on him, you know, giving him, telling him what he's got to do to correct the nuisance, and a time limit. If he doesn't meet that, we'll schedule, like we did before, a notice and hearing, and it'll be back before the council and asking you to issue them to direct an order, telling him that, you know, do it or else, and if he doesn't, then we can go to court.
Sounds good. Thanks, Scott.
I would assume that it's not a habitable property, having not been in it. If it appeared as though someone was living in it, is there any kind of immediate actions that can be taken that you're aware of, or will we have to possibly involve Stearns County Public Health, or?
At this point, I don't think they've got any plans, because if they started building on it, it had to stop, so you're right, it's not, and I don't know who would live in there.
And I understand, it doesn't look like in any way, shape, or form, but if someone was to try, you know, if it appeared as though someone was living in it, I don't, I don't think that would be a good situation from a health standpoint or a safety standpoint.
There's a do not occupy posted on the building, so they should not be able to legally occupy it. There's portions of walls that are missing and just plastic put on over it. Part of the electrical box cover is off, I don't think it's been a little bit stable.
It obviously has no utilities hooked up, electric, waters, or stuff like that, so.
Right. Thank you.
6C Community Development Director Report.
The city's issued 41 building permits in 2015, are completed thus far. Seventeen were issued in first quarter, 24 second quarter, 32 are residential, nine are commercial. That breaks down to 35 general, five mechanical, and one plumbing. That includes one new house permit. There's two garages larger than 200 square feet and two swimming pools. Total valuation of building permits is $770,938. There were 24 zoning permits, 24 right-of-way permits. Zoning permits include six fences, nine sheds, seven permits for paving, and one sign permit. Planning, the planning commission considered an application from Dakota Mossman regarding a variance from the subdivision ordinance to a lot split, allow a lot split instead of a plat. This was heard by the commission on June 29th. They unanimously recommended approval, given the unique size, shape, and location of the lot and other factors. At the planning commission meeting at the end of this month, Munson Feed Mill is requesting a new 48-foot grain bin on their parcel on the west side of Third Avenue, and it's immediately northwest of their existing 60-foot diameter grain bin. And they're requesting a variance for primarily height. For the last, at the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission also considered zoning ordinance amendments. They're going to continue that discussion at the next meeting. The discussion included parking, loading, and storage, specifically regarding whether a gravel driveway should be permitted off of a gravel alley. They also are going to discuss the segment of the ordinance that requires building permits versus zoning permits for accessory structures. Our ordinance still says that cutoff is 125 square feet. State law says it should be 200 square feet, so we're going to make that consistent and do some associated updating to that. The signage portion of the ordinance, we're going to be working on the billboard sign section, which was not updated when the rest of the sign ordinance was updated in 2019, and we're also going to take a look at the swimming pool regulations. Regarding MADA, we had emergency revolving loan funds that have now been issued for four businesses totaling $40,000. And there's one rehab forgivable commercial deferred loan for $5,000 that was issued on June 11th for the proposed daycare building. And I think, Colleen, you're going to talk further about the care's money, so I'll let you take over on that end.
Thank you.
City Engineer Report. Mike, you still there?
Mike, are you on?
Yep, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you, so if you want to give your report, that would be great.
Okay, let me know if I'm screaming too loud. Okay, a couple of projects, I think you have my memo, but I'll just touch a little bit on the Casey's South Side progress. They were raising the berm, the last time I checked there, I'm not sure if it's completed, but I will do a final on that berm height the next time I'm in town. There was an area on the southwest quadrant of that intersection that was holding some water, so we are removing some curb and the pedestrian ramp, and we'll be regrading that and repaving it to get the water to run to the curb and eliminate that potential hazard during the winter. So that's all I've got on that with the Fifth Street project. They are making some decent progress now. They do have the subcutting just about completed on Fifth Street. Tomorrow, they're supposed to complete the subcutting on Fourth, and then they will be hauling gravel. Well, first of all, they have to put in the curb and gutter, which they're going to start on Tuesday. They'll be hauling gravel towards the end of next week, and then the schedule is that they'll be paving on July 27th and 28th. So they are on schedule to meet their deadline, and so far, they're doing a good job. We did find the buried stump that was in the middle of the road, so we got that taken care of, and things are progressing quite well out there. A little bit slow, but they're doing a good job, so that's really about all I've got, unless you have any questions. Oh, the bridge project, the survey has, the street survey has been completed, so we'll be entering that data into the Corps of Engineers tool and getting that information off to the DNR and the court, so. Colleen may have more of an update, but that's about what I know on the bridge project right now, so if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just got a quick one, Mike, about the bridge project, and I'm sure we've touched on it in the past, but let's say they somehow get a bonding bill passed for, is it too late to pass for next year?
So the bonding bill is in right now, next year, it's at every other year cycle for bonding?
Right.
So it wouldn't be until '23 that they would pass, or '22, '22 that they pass?
'22, that's the earliest we will have an opportunity to the bridge?
No, there's actually separate funds that the county could get for bridge dollars. Yep.
So their money is separate from what we request, we request? And so the county could very well get their money?
Allegated to?
Yep, because they have had our project in their capital improvement fund for the last five years, so.
So, Mike, I guess back to what I was getting at was, it says that project is like a month behind, and if I, if I remember it correctly, we have to be at a certain percent engineered before the county will enter that in their lineup of projects for their funding season? Where do we sit as far as that goes?
Well, certainly, well, I think we're, you know, we're premature for calling it an approved project, but I mean, as we go along, we'll certainly be working very closely with Jody Tyke to get on that schedule, and if at some point, whether we don't get DNR permits or whatever, you know, we'll keep Jody impressed in that and adjust accordingly.
I'm sure she wants to get this one out of her hair, too, so.
Yes, yes.
Soon as possible.
So.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
City Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually only have a couple items to address right now, and then the rest of the items that I'm going to be talking about are contained within the bulk of the agenda. So two items just of note. Typically, we have the Stearns County attorney come to the city council meeting and present to you statistics from 2019, as well as their contract. Totally will take responsibility for this one. I think they mailed this to me probably in March or April, but with everything going on with COVID, I didn't even, it got set aside. So in your packet is the Stearns County Attorney's Report. If you had a chance to look at that, it's just some basic information. And so that's kind of where that's at, so it's just really for your information only. And then the other item that I want you to be aware of is the state demographer's office came out with their 2019 population and household estimates, and they are currently 3,680 is the population estimate for 2019. That compared to 2,000 is up a little bit. And then the household estimate is 1,336, which again is not up a lot, it's less than a percent from where it was at in 2,000. The other thing that I do want to mention about that is if you have looked at the city's Facebook page or their website, also within util, all the residents within the community should have received a flyer that talks about making sure that you get your census information done. It is really critical that people fill out the census forms. That helps us in many, many ways, but it simply is very critical that people do that. So if you have noticed this week on our Facebook page, we've really been pushing that. There's been a new census information that has gone out every day regarding that. So I guess to the audience that may be listening, I would encourage anybody who has not filled out their census information to please go to that website and to fill it out. The information is on the city's website, it's also on our Facebook page, it is also www2020.gov if you want to find that information, so. If you do not fill it out, there will be people that will be coming door to door to ask you those questions. So again, it's, everyone needs to count, we want to count everyone in our communities, so. That's what I have now, and then again, I have some other things further down on the agenda.
Okay. Any questions, guys?
Nope.
All right, on to action items. 70, on sale 3.2% malt liquor license and wine license request, Martinez Meat and Grocery. Council to give consideration to request for a on sale 3.2% malt liquor license and wine license issued to Maria de Lords of Martinez Meat and Grocery. A background investigation has been conducted by the PD Maria de Lords, and no records have been found. All right, we've gone through all the Minnesota statute-regulated actions on this. So any discussion on that?
I'd make a motion to approve if everything is within the parameters.
I'd make a motion to approve if everything is within the parameters.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor, signify by five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Seven B, Warrior Boat Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. We heard from Lisa about that during the public hearing. I don't have any issues with it. It's logical to me.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Seven C, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing. Let's see, on variance six dash twenty twenty dash one zero three for Dakota Mossman. Lisa, do you want to give us a little summary of that?
Yes. Excuse me. This property is located in the northwest portion of the city, just right on the edge of this city. As you can see, it shows the proposed new lot. It's on the far west end of the property. On the far east end, it's existing lots that were platted back in the late eighteen hundreds. Under our current ordinance, if you're creating a lot that's under five acres in size, you need to do a plat of the entire property. The applicants requested a variance from that requirement. A very narrow exception is being requested due to several factors unique to this property. The existing lot contains over, about an acre of river bottom, the lot in full as it currently exists. The unique shape of the lot due to the configuration of the river, the highway, the wooded non-farmable area that is created on one end makes sense to consider allowing one lot on this small unique triangle of land so that the remainder of the land can remain farmland. Also, the lot includes numerous previously separate parcels, including previously dedicated right-of-way from 1896, which has been combined into this one large parcel, although the parcels are separated by dedicated right-of-way. The planning commission considered this and other factors. They reviewed the three factors for granting variances, including reasonableness, unique circumstances, and neighborhood character, and they have recommended allowing a lot split to create a three-acre lot.
And would this lot immediately become buildable?
It's one, yeah, it would be one buildable lot.
One buildable lot, okay.
They're planning to just put one home on it.
Sure.
And the findings of fact detailing all of that is included in the staff report and in the resolution.
Findings of facts. If there's any discussion on that, I have none. It makes perfect sense to me, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Are you going to start digging tonight, Dakota, getting out your hammer and sawing nails and stuff, or are you going to?
We've still got to get the paperwork signed and stuff like that for the next couple of years.
All right, seven D.
So the city of Malrose Public Utilities received from the United States Department of Energy Western Area Power Administration contract. That's a lot of legalese. Basically, we contract with Missouri River Energy Services, but we also get a portion of our power from Western Area Power Administration. And in 2012, we had signed a very long contract with, yeah, thirty-year contract with WAPA. But this basically gives MRES the ability to purchase power on our behalf from WAPA. So that's all it is. We had an attorney review it, and she had no issues with it.
If I remember correctly, the contract we signed in 2012 was way longer than this contract.
Way longer.
Yeah, so this is more of an intermediate?
Yeah, it's just a formality. It's really just, again, it's more of a technical type of thing. It gives MRES the power to purchase from Western, because we purchase two different ways from MRES. One, you know, we purchase through MRES, and then we can, I believe some of our stuff comes directly from Western Power.
Is there any benefit to not signing it? I mean, is there?
I don't think so, because it's really through our bigger utility, which is MRES, that co-op, and if their attorney is recommending that we sign it, I would say that we should probably sign it.
Yeah, because I did notice something in there about some rate changes, and they have the right to, based on certain factors, increase the rates and then just be passed on or whatever.
Yep.
Because I would guess Missouri River, at that point, if there was a drastic up or rate increase that we're getting from Western Area Power, I would assume that Missouri River at that point may look for a little less power from them and a little more from somebody that's more reasonable, so.
Yeah, there's quite a mix that they employ when they look at power for us.
I'm sure they're obviously after the best rates for everybody, so, and they have the sizable bargaining.
The one thing I will tell you that we just received, I just received an alert from MRES that WAPA, Western Area Power, just received a very high bond rating, so that bodes very well for us as well, so. And that's reflective in the members that are part of MRES, so that's good.
All right, action, council to consider approving the Western Area Power Administration contract. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to allow the city administrator to be the city's signator in this contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Old Business, it a tax forfeited property, this is the bad hill.
At your last meeting, you considered a request to reduce the assessment on two tax-forfeited lots, when they would be combined with the abutting lot. Staff inadvertently conveyed the dollar amount incorrectly. The motion is included in your packet. If you could just make the same motion again, but insert the correct dollar amount, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay. I'm not going to read it. I'm just going to state, but you get a motion as stated in the packet so that I don't screw up when I'm reading it.
I'll make a motion as stated.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Eight B, Shaggy's Towing Update.
On October 21st, 2019, staff noted that there was a structure with a tarp cover on it at Shaggy's Towing. We sent notice to them at that point, and they were given until November 13th to remove the structure. Staff then extended that deadline to June 15th, 2020. Obviously, we're now about a month past that. We did send notice to them on, let's see, it was in, on June 26th, and again on July 8th, and those are included in your packet. The text of the July 8th is included in your packet. We also copied Collins Brothers Towing and received no response from either of them.
To add a little bit more to, just so you guys are aware, I had talked to Chris Snyder, who is the owner of Shaggy's Towing, and explained to him the situation and the notifications that we had given to him, and asked sort of what his long-term plans were, and he said that his intent is to build a structure there. But because of COVID and other things, their revenues are down significantly, and so they're not in a position where they can do that at this time. I know that he, Mr. Snyder, also had a conversation with Mayor Finkin about this. Mayor Finkin did want me to convey to the rest of the council that he did have that conversation with Mr. Snyder, at which time Chris showed him his plans for what their intent is for that property. And so Joe wanted me to express to the rest of the council that he would be willing to work with Mr. Snyder on a extended deadline so that he had an opportunity to build that.
And Mr. Snyder also reached out to me and explained the same thing, and he had, he indicated that he's working with lending institution, and he's been working with lumberyard also in getting a plan together and get a site plan or whatever. He said he would be pulling a permit to build a structure in the not-too-distant future. He said he would really like to have a building up within six months to replace that structure. It was intended to be a temporary structure. That's what he conveyed to me. So I don't know if we just want to?
I think we want to table this at least a month.
Just to see if there's any progress?
Full council and mayor present and just see at that time if Mr. Snyder can firm up a little bit more as to what his intentions are, the direction that he's going. It's not going to be carte blanche that we'll be talking about this at this time next year, but given the status of everybody and the economy for three months, driving by it, it's not like it's a flimsy, it looks like, if you're not aware of what it looks like, it's a, looks like a large type canopy that you'd see over a pontoon boat lift. It's fairly stout structure with shipping containers on either side of it. And granted, it doesn't meet the requirements. I'm not saying that it does meet the requirements, but let's, let's see where we are a month from now, and maybe Mr. Snyder can provide us with some more details, maybe a little firmer timeline.
Right. Sounds good, so I guess we'll, by consensus, just table this. Eight C, Arsato Update.
Staff's been working with Arsato for about the last eighteen months on, excuse me, just shy of two years, it'll be two years in November, on getting their site in conformance with their conditional use permit. They are definitely making progress in that regard. They have put landscape planters in, were there to be required to be replaced, but they haven't yet put in anything in the planters, so they're just simply empty flower pots at this point. The other issues that remain is that the area where the vehicles for sale are parked still has crushed granite that is planned to be replaced with crushed botuminus at the end of this summer. Staff asked for a couple of measurable items, including a contract, pulling a zoning permit for the changing of the materials, and then also removal of the granite chips in preparation for doing that, and those steps have not occurred. Staff's given quite a few extensions now for this, and Mr. Arsenal is wanting to proceed with adding an accessory structure in the northwest portion of his lot. And so this is the point where typically the city has the ability to not authorize issuance of a building permit until the site is in conformance with the regulations as they currently stand. Staff did issue a building permit for the structure back in November. That had a criteria that the structure being, or that the property be in compliance by, I believe it was May 15th. Obviously, that date has come and passed, and the site is not yet fully in compliance, so that building permit is not valid until it either comes into compliance or the city council says, go ahead and allow him to continue as proposed. Further, he's requesting at this point to increase the size of that structure, and that also falls under kind of that same criteria. Staff's unwilling to issue a permit at this point, just given the number of extensions that have already come and passed. So it would require council to say that it's okay to proceed if that's what you would like, or to require him to bring the site into compliance prior to getting a permit. At this point, you know, there's, there's just a couple of issues remaining. And then the other one is putting the dumpster in a building, which obviously will be resolved once he puts his building up, so we're not as concerned, obviously, about that at this point.
Putting the building up will fix an issue.
Dumpster, correct.
So I don't see why we would hold up a building permit if he's going to be fixing one of the issues with that. That's just, you know, logical thinking, right? Granted, there are other, there's a couple other issues outstanding?
There is the landscaping and the paving underneath the cars for sale.
Car sales, and I think I noticed yesterday, I think the cars have been pulled off of that, correct?
Correct. Today, they weren't parked on the granite. Although, you got to put a little more water on those flowers, brother, because they ain't coming very well.
Okay, about the flowers, I know that takes planning, but hate to throw this out there, but would fake plastic flowers count? Because you don't have to water them, they look nice. Would that qualify to have something in the flower body?
If, if I may, Tony, one of the things, and I had met with Joe out on his site, and through this process, originally, he, you know, there was an eight-foot landscape buffer that had to go in there. And over the period of the two years that we've been working with Joe, one of the things that did occur is there is a trail there. There's a walking biking trail that actually is in there. And so we basically said to him, look, we're just saying, put something that?
A barrier.
Some sort of a barrier.
So everybody knows not to back onto the sidewalk.
Exactly, and that's, that's really where we had left it with him. So we were very liberal in terms of what our interpretation of, of what a landscaping was, was, and so last conversation I had with Joe, and I know Lisa talked to him, well, you know, maybe a really cost-effective solution for you is put up, you know, those flower pots, you know, or whatever the case may be. One of his neighbors has, I believe it's three or four feet of rock, so it's the trail, it's rock, and then they park beyond that. There's two reasons for us wanting that. Number one, typically, you will want the landscape area, which is eight feet, for the reasons you just described. You want people backing over the curb. There's different reasons for having that. In this case, because we have a trail right there, it's for the safety of the people that are on the trail, plus it's for Mr. Arsenal's shop itself, making sure that his folks, you know, stay far enough away from where people may be utilizing that trail. So we said we have to have something there. And we worked, we worked with him to say, hey, we're willing to do this. But I don't think, you know, it has to be by definition some sort of landscaping. I don't necessarily, I don't think we're really opposed to him putting fake flowers, but, you know what I mean?
Something quick that you can throw in there to make it look like it's, you know, being addressed or whatever, and maybe.
In the future, if he wants to.
Half the growing season is over now.
Right, right.
I don't know if that's something that?
And, you know, I understand, here again, business and stuff, and it probably wasn't real good for, for the last three months, but I'm also pretty sure when I drove by on Monday of this week, there were a couple cars on the west side that were parked off of the pavement, onto the grass. But the cars on the east side, the for-sale cars, were parked on the granite fines on Monday. I believe that the cars that were for sale were parked on the granite fines on Monday of this week. Okay, so tonight, we're discussing it, and when I drive by today, everything, with the exception of something in the flower pots, is pretty much up to standard, you know? So I'm, you're kind of pushing it to the very edge, is what I'm looking at, you know? That today, today it looks about as good as it probably has, and with, with something in the flower pots, we really wouldn't be able to pitch much of a, you know, a squawk.
And my issue that has been with the flower pots is I've had so many different answers. I have the letter that Mike Rutter signed that said if I put curb stops in there, that would be considered, I offered a strip, but that would be okay. But then after I put those out there, then I was informed by someone else that I can't do that. So it's just been up in the air, it's so different, oh, you can do this, and I can do that, and no, no, you can't do that. And that's why I was pushing off the planters, putting them on.
And I would assume that those wooden, and they look nice, those wooden large flower containers or landscape containers probably went in in the last week?
I actually remember the discussion with the curb stops, and that's why it was kind of, you know, I haven't noticed that they weren't there, but I do remember that discussion, that the curb stops were supposed to be adequate.
And the curb stops, I think, were kind of a stopgap measure, but the actual approved conditional use permit says that from July 1st, 2019, moving forward until such time as the parking lot is modified to allow for more permanent landscape buffer, unless the ordinance is modified to remove the landscaping buffer requirement, landscape planters at a minimum of one landscape planter, at least two feet wide, at least one centered in front of each parking space, shall be installed and maintained from May 1st to October 31st each year. So I don't think it's a matter of the things changing since July 1st.
And Mr. Arsenal, I'm not accusing you of anything, but it just seems like it's an eleventh-hour issue. I'm here to the point where I want to build this shed, which I think is a good thing. You can put your, your extra parts and stuff in there. I'm sure you need the room and, you know, your dumpster and stuff. It looks, it's a nice-looking shed, but it's kind of a, you know what I'm saying? Kind of eleventh hour, we're right at the deadline kind of deal.
I was honestly waiting to tell this. What I understood from the last council meeting was that I had to tell, you know, my apartment vehicles on there until I was going to wait till. wait till November the sixteenth, fifteen.
Okay.
And I did that, and now, just like the conditional use permit says, I won't park on it until it's crushed tar, it's got crushed concrete. And now-
And you've got-
I was actually going to throw in it, that's why I haven't sent the permit in for doing the tar until they tear up ninety-four. They said they don't know how it's going to tear up. They said it might be fine, and it might be nice, crushed, but he said it could come up with a big chance. And I don't want it, that's going to be a big nasty chance, and I'm not needing anything. So I was waiting until they knew how it was tearing up to put it down, otherwise it would cement it. But I won't tell you when it's cemented, it's also not the rule that was issued.
So if we were to proceed with letting you put up the garage, are we going to see something in our flowerpots out there in the next week or so, or?
After, now, would fake ones work? Because that was another question, I didn't know that maybe it would be soil, because like Tony said, I'm not a parker, I'm not a gardener.
No, and we're not expecting you to be.
I think, I just don't think it makes sense to put anything real in there, because they'll be dead, and that's, I think, is to just put something nice.
I don't know, they can get some pretty nice-looking fake flowers. I mean, you know, there's-
And if there's some sort of a fake tree, you could leave it out there all year long, you know?
And again, the whole point of why I talked to Joe, and the reason behind him having to put this here, originally, you have to remember, we've been dealing with Joe for a couple of years on this. And when I came on board, and I had talked to him, it was really, it's because that trail's there. And it's really, again, a protection for the people around the trail, as well as a protection for his folks, if they, if they park cars or whatever.
I understand the trail issue, that's kind of a, you know, obviously, nobody should be able to park on a sidewalk or on a designated trail. That I, that I fully understand. And on the other, on the flip side, I like to look at the other side also. I'm sure you work a lot of hours in a day, you're a hard-working businessman, you've put up a nice shed there, a nice facility there. If we can come to some type of agreeable solution where everybody's not just mad at each other, that, that would be, that would be the ideal solution. So if we can come up with some way to allow either the planters with fake flowers to, to keep cars off the trail there, and I don't know, I know the conditional use permit says one thing, but I think when you're dealing with businesses, especially in tough times, I think we, we need to be a little bit understanding from where they're coming from also. And because I tell you, getting building permits to do things nowadays has gotten, the last ten, twenty years, has gotten extremely complicated. And codes are difficult to interpret, coming up with site plans to do things, and, you know, when you get, you get the code thrown at you and said, here, this is what you have to meet, then, you know, and I, I know that initial use permit was gone through, site plan was done. It always looks good on paper, but when you get down to actually building the facility and using the facility, sometimes it doesn't quite work as well. And you probably ran out of room in the front of a building near the road, right? And that's why you've kind of been pushing limits on that.
What's the consequence if, like, if Joe didn't want a new building, what, what would the city do?
I said again, I'm sorry.
So like, what's the consequence? Right now, you're, we're not giving him a permit as kind of the consequence for not having his other things done. But if he didn't want a new building, and he needs to put a fake plant by the road, yeah, like, what, what would be that step? Because I feel like, Tony, we shouldn't hold up a building permit. We should let that, because that's going to resolve an issue, plus he, that, if he needs that building to make money, and I'm assuming money is part of the tar, the pots, the, you know what I mean? That all takes money to fix problems too, so.
So ultimately, for any conditional use permit that's not meeting the conditions, the city can go through a hearing process to revoke the conditional use permit. Obviously, that's worst-case scenario, and we never want to go there. So this point in the road, staff's obviously been very interested in working with him and trying to move this along as much as we could. And it's just because it's at this point where he needs a permit, that we feel that it's important to bring the city council into the discussion and to say yes or no. Staff obviously wants to see this project move forward and have him continue to be a successful and viable business in the community. So that's not the issue, it's just simply that we're at this point of discussion, and at this juncture, this needs to be a council decision. It's not something that staff really can say yes or no on it. It really does need to be decided by the council.
And I'm sure if we found out the usual building permit, all these outstanding issues were happening, and we weren't informed that there was a building permit-
It would be the other side of it.
That we could withhold, that somebody on the council or may be upset about that. So more information is always better than not enough, so. But I, I think the building permit is fine to, to issue if it's going to address an issue. That's my-
I would say issue the permit, and then just set up a time to get the other things done. I mean, if, if the bituminous is going on the crushed granite, I, I won't tear the granite out till the bituminous is ready, but maybe that could, maybe he could get a date on that, so it's not just like sometime, some, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
Because if that project falls through, then you'd have to just buy a couple somewhere else, right? That's kind of the-
They're starting to tear ninety-four on July twenty-seventh. So on twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, I planned on taking out all the granite, and then for the whole length of that east side of the building where we park the cars, like you said, it's going to be tore up, dirt, you know, build it. And then on that twenty-seventh, or whatever month, they start taking out, we figure out if it's good, if it's bad, and how it goes up. Again, I don't want to pull up the down, it's a big chance. It's not worth it, it's not worth it, it's not worth it. Then at that time, then I would do cement instead, which is everything down harder than cement, which is about throw of forms.
Right. Do you think by winter, you'd have the, whatever, by winter, do you think you'd have whatever solution?
This is, because once I tear that up, I'm going to do it twenty-fifth, you know, just before. So I don't want to hold them up, you're doing me a favor by bringing me this crushed granite, or crushed-
Asphalt, yeah.
Yep. And so I'm going to be ready to wait for it. If it is bad, then perform it, then we'll cement. If it's good, it's good.
And with concrete, this will require a fifty-dollar permit to do?
It would. Regardless, he'll need a permit for doing driveway work.
Okay. So just want to make sure-
If I have a permit there, I just didn't turn it in because I wanted to figure out-
What exactly?
If I change, if I put cement down, if I say I'm putting my car, I'm going to cement it.
Could, could you put either one or the other depending on, on the permit, so that whichever way it goes, it's ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
But it'd be fine.
Sound good?
For me, we need a motion on that, please.
Well, I can buy into this yet, because it's going to help your business, it's going to improve the, you know, the professional area.
Right.
And this is just me personally. We're giving an inch, we're not taking a mile. Okay? Taking, as a gentleman and as a business owner, you say you're going to do something, then I guess I'm expecting you to get it done, without a whole bunch crowding from the city, and, you know, and back and forth. So I think, I think we've got an understanding now. Am I correct?
You are.
Okay, very good. And then I can buy into this yet, but like I say, we're giving an inch, we're not taking a mile.
Okay, action item.
Is there a motion?
I did a motion.
Yep.
Patty would like a motion on that issue.
I'll make a motion.
On the shed. Yeah, I was just reading that, actually, council considering.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. Council consider if the permit should be issued to Mr. Arsenal for the shed, do I have a motion to go ahead with the building permit?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Closed, motion carried. Okay, thanks, Joe. Thanks, Lisa. 8D, Rose Park update.
I think you kind of had a pretty good overview. I can tell you that we have a thirty-ish-page document that highlights all of the violations, photographically outlines what's happened.
Over the years.
We kept really good records. So, yeah, we will continue to pursue that.
Okay, no motion on that. That was just an update. 8E, Mouse Police Department has been notified that Leadstone no longer accepts stray or abandoned animals. Police Chief Mouse has been looking at other locations that would take these animals.
Yes, I'll give you guys a brief history. In May, we got a phone call from the vet clinic saying that owners decided they're no longer going to be doing strays. Part of it, I think, is related to the COVID situation. They shut down clinics, rotated docks, and those sorts of things. And maybe realized at that point that having the extra help on hands nights and weekends was a good cost-saving measure as well, and maybe they couldn't get people to, to do that work anymore. I don't know the complete ideas, but ourselves, Socks Center, Albany, and Stearns County Sheriff's Office brought our dogs to the Melrose facility. We generally had priority as far as when the kennel was getting full and whatever else there, holding for Melrose dogs, but that wasn't always the case. So it worked out well for, in nineteen years I've been here, for sure, if not longer, obviously. So we started looking around at other vet services that may or may not do this, doggy daycares, private, commercial, as well as kennels in general. At this point, those were limited services. Some of them got back to us right away, saying, no, we're not going to, and then some of them, it was late June before we got any good answers. So what we've done is checked in with Humane Society as well. St. Cloud says, no, we're not taking anybody because they have a contract with the city of St. Cloud, as well as they just take in too many animals, whatever else. Alexandria has some consideration related to it. They contract with the city of Alexandria. Socks Center now has a contract with them because of this. They're concerned about space issues as well, can't guarantee us spots, but they're willing to work with us, you know, kind of on a case-by-case basis, which limits on how we can continue to run, you know, the dog catching service, really. So we started looking at is, what if the city started doing it on our own? How does this look, what does it look like? The League of Minnesota Cities follows and recommends following the guidelines of the Animal Welfare Care Act. And this is what the kennels and doggy daycares follow. The kennels specifically really work with this because they need to have an indoor facility, which is part of the, the act. You need to have something that's climate-controlled, or at least comfortable, is how it says. So you're looking at heating and cooling. So we'd need something on an in, indoor basis. They also recommend having an outdoor kennel of some sort for exercise, as well as you have somewhere to put the animals in while you're cleaning kennels and those sorts of things. So when you start looking into what the, the Animal Care Act says, it gets a bit concerning for a city to operate with the duties we already do. So some of the things are, is a minimum of eight hours of, of light for indoor kennels. Check with the current city buildings. We do have some space down at wastewater, but there's not a single window in it, there's no ventilation in it. So you have to be concerned about, you know, odors, air quality, moisture, all those sorts of things. Food every twenty-four hours at one point, and give, give the dogs some food. Fresh water every eight hours, exercise for twenty to thirty minutes every eight hours. So some of the areas of concern with that is consistency. So you're already taking an animal out of its normal environment, you're putting it into a space that it's not used to. The kennels and the doggy daycares are obviously saying, well, you need to have some sort of routine and consistency while they're staying there, because that makes them a little less nervous, and things go a little bit better. If it's going to be an outdoor kennel, which, like I said, they're recommending indoor, you have probably barking issues, you're going to have some digging issues, you might also have some animals pacing back and forth, which could become a nuisance to the neighbors, as well as a big concern for the care of the dog, or the overall health of the dog, if it starts to get that nervous or that concerned. We looked into then, what do we all need to do this? We'd probably need three kennels, two indoors, so you can either have enough for two dogs, as well as maybe rotate an outdoor kennel or a run of some sort, so they could exercise. I don't know that we'd be taking them on, you know, joyful walks throughout the city three times a day, but they do need some sort of exercise, or that's what's required under the act. So that's some things that we'd have to be concerned about. And then, of course, there's some disinfecting sprays, bowls, dog food, those sorts of things. And a lot of the reason that we can't just talk to a kennel or a doggy daycare is because we're bringing in strays that, with unknown vaccination histories, rabies being one of them, distemper, which is the kennel cough, the dog flu, very contagious amongst dogs, and very concerning for client dogs that they would have. So none of these other facilities have quarantine areas where they say, okay, here's our, here's our stray area, and here's the rest of our client animals. So it'd be added expenses for them. If they wish to take this on, as well as it could be something that, even if the city proposed it, we'd still be paying the same dollars for kennels of some sort to an outside facility, and those sorts of things. Some stuff that's going, that we looked at that maybe benefits is, we could charge daily fees for keeping the dogs. The vet clinic here in Melrose was charging sixteen dollars a night or a day to store the animals. Fifteen to twenty is pretty common for those sorts of things, so that there'd be some financial benefit on that side. We would also then be able to guarantee that people are coming in to pick up their animal, to have their vaccinations, as well as get their city license. Currently, the, a lot of owners would go up to the vet clinic, say, okay, you need to get a city license, now that's part of the requirements. Yep, I'll go do that one as soon as I leave here. And they walk up with their animal, they never showed up here. Those sorts of things. So those were things we weren't necessarily able to follow up on, because we didn't know when they were being released all the time, as well as the owners weren't taking those responsibilities either. We have some concerns with working with Alexandria, partially just because you pick up a dog, if it's on times when they're not open, you hold the dog either way. When they are open, then you got to make a trip to Alexandria and come back. City of Socks Center, they work with their public works department to go and do that. I did talk with Gary. It's more duties put on to his department, more duties put on to ours. Is it financially viable to be running a truck or squad car up to Alexandria, as well as our hourly rate of pay to go and do this? And that's a concern I have, as well as with storage fees. Say we go on a high end of twenty dollars. If we're looking at getting close to the recommendations they're talking about as far as the cleaning, the exercise, all those sorts of things, we don't get anywhere near an hourly rate by twenty dollars a day. Twenty dollars a day isn't even the base rate for our incoming officers.
And even if you sit on it for five days, and you have to euthanize it, then you're, you're nothing.
Right. And that's, so state law does say we have to keep it for five days before we could bring it to Humane Society, or before we could adopt it out. Now, with that, we talked to with the vet clinic, and what they had on hand right away and easily available is, we brought, we've had two doc, or twelve docs, excuse me, from January until June. Two of those were just at the end, when we were saying, well, we're just not going to bring them up anymore, because they're going to be shutting down pretty soon for us anyway. We found the owners back with those through social media, which worked out pretty well. But we did have two dogs that stayed the full ten days, which is what our policy says before they can be euthanized or adopted out. So five days by state law, but we have a policy saying, okay, you can hold it, we want you to hold it for ten before any euthanization happens, or before it can be adopted. So those two were held for the full ten days, they were then adopted out or rehomed. We had one at three days, one at two days, and then the remaining six were either that very same day or the next day they got rid of. So the hope is always that, that very same day, okay, yeah, we didn't quite recognize that this was fluffy, and, and whatever else, we can get fluffy right back. But without collars, tags, and those sorts of things, we can't make those guarantees. So those are some, some of the things we looked at when we were working on all of this. Areas of concern, obviously, is the consistency with all this. Gary's department, they're in sporadically in the winter for plowing snow. The parks guys are in on the weekend, but they come in, they do their duties throughout the parks, and they don't, they're not there the rest of the day. Water, wastewater, same thing. They check their pumps, they check their wells, and they're out for the rest of the day. Electric is only on an on-call basis kind of thing. We are the only department that's there twenty-four hours a day, but we can't guarantee we're going to be able to do this work on a consistent basis. And that's where I have concerns. I don't think it's fair to the animal that if we get a call, and the expectation was that the night car was supposed to, you know, let out at six o'clock, and the night car gets a call, that very well takes later into the evening that this dog now sat in its own mess, or anything else, for a period of time, that maybe is unacceptable. There's some concerns with that, as well as, like I said, having a space for all these animals to go, the proper water, the draining, all those sorts of things. We don't have a facility, or a place in our, our current facilities that allows for this. It doesn't have a drain, so we can't necessarily clean up after the animal properly.
Doesn't Sergeant Nick Nicky have a pretty good-sized backyard?
He would. So that's why we, Colleen and I talked, is there maybe we throw out a, an ad saying, hey, this is, you know, whatever else. We looked at private, all the doggy daycares, you know, so. It'd have to be somebody that just basically said, okay, this is something I'm going to do as a side job, or a hobby, I don't know.
We also, just for you guys' information, I did, I did talk to David with Leadstone. He was not aware that this was happening, but he did say that he would pass the information along to the other side of that group, which is the veterinary side. So I did ask that Dr.?
Overby.
Overby, thank you. Give me a call. So I'm hoping to talk to her. What we're hoping to do is maybe if we are able to pay, enter into a contract with them on, you know, it's a guaranteed monthly fee or something, that they would still, they may reconsider housing just Melrose dogs. I'm not saying we're going to have any luck with that, but that is something that I would like to consider.
And you're thinking that there's a possibility somebody within a mile to three miles of town has a barn or shed that they're not using, and could fence, and might be interested in being a dog boarding- being a dog boarding place?
Well, and that was where we, when we looked to the doggy daycares and the kennels, the ones that, you know, have the heart and the passion for this sort of thing, and they didn't necessarily jump up and say, yeah, absolutely, we'll see you tomorrow. That's where it got concerning that we might not be able to find anybody. I did talk with a few people that have done adoption or fostering services, and their concern is, is also bringing in animals that don't have the correct shots and those sorts of things, as well as how does the fostering process go after the five-day minimum? Is it now my dog to get rid of? Is it the city's dog to get rid of? What do we do with it? And those are questions we haven't gotten answered yet, but it's, it's been a limited response as far as on a positive side of things. And just a note, I guess, we did look into kennels, doctors, it was about $2,500 is what we need to put into getting established with all of this.
Maybe one of us, but have we thrown something on our Facebook page saying, hey, if we're running into an issue finding homes for dog, temporary homes for dogs, cats?
Do cats?
For five to 10 days? How many people would be willing to, you know, sign up on Facebook or whatever and say, yeah, I, I don't mind taking a dog for five days or whatever? You know, I have a pool of people, local people, that, because there's a lot of people left there that, they, one of my neighbors does, they take in dogs, bus here for dogs or stuff temporarily, but I don't know if that's an option. See if we can get 10 people in the community that would be willing to just take a dog for five days, 10 days or whatever. I don't know, you know, have it local so that.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was just kind of referring to, is how does then the surrender process work? How does, is the city then part of the adoption process?
Is the city liable in case?
Right.
Yeah, I can see a stipend for the food and stuff, but if, but the insurance, if they, you know, get bit and then you got to go through rabies vaccinations because we don't know for sure.
There have to be paperwork involved and all kinds of agreements and stuff like that.
Yeah, it feels as simple as.
More complicated than it should be.
Yeah, it feels as simple as putting a kennel right outside the police department door and calling it good.
Right.
Our officers would probably be fine with that. You come and go throughout the night and those sorts of things. The problem is, is that when you get a short-haired dog in the winter, now we have, only have an outdoor kennel, or we have a long-haired dog, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and we had 90s with due points into 70s, what are we really, are we really providing a service or are we, we just holding on to animals until whenever? The hope would be is that that would maybe push people to get licensing, but we haven't seen that with the current system, and I don't know that it helps or hurts for us to be part of it. We're willing to do this to an extent, as far as the police department's side, we just can't make promises and we don't feel that's fair to what this guidelines that the League of Minnesota City had out, which I wasn't aware of until I started looking into this stuff, as well as it's not fair to the animal. If you get, you know, if I pick up your dog and also it comes back in a condition that it didn't leave, leave the house with, you know, a few hours later, it'd probably be a pretty big frustration, so we're a bit leery on all of this.
And I don't believe that the Main Street City Maintenance Area would be an option because if you get a barker and it barks all night, who are they going to call? They're going to call the police and it's like, well, it's our dog, you know, for now. Wastewater possibly, you hear again, like you say, we're almost erecting some sort of a shed and insulating it for the, for the cold months, and then your fenced run area, your outdoor area, and somebody's got to tend to one or more critters every day that there's something in there.
So when we, when this all started, we did talk with the other departments, and like I said, SOX Center, they pick them up, but then the Public Works takes care of the rest of it. Stearns County said, we're going all the way to St. Cloud with ours, so even if they pick it up in Belgrade, they're going all the way across county with their dog. Albany has taken the stance that if it doesn't have city tags, it's going to continue to run. If it's a dangerous dog or a potentially dangerous dog or is vicious, obviously we have different criteria for that, but they said it's, it's not in our, it's not in our job duties really to be dog catchers, and yes and no. I mean, I, I see both sides of it.
I can see, you know, like, boy, if it's a dangerous dog, obviously.
Yeah, different story.
Have the responsibility to take care of something like that, but, you know, it's, like I said, fluffy around on the street.
And you get.
I've seen plenty of them would not need a phone call, just they'll make their way back home eventually, they're just out for a while type of thing.
But they're dancing around out in the middle of South Second Avenue at 2:00 in the afternoon looking like, where am I? You know, you got to do something, otherwise you scoop up the carcass in an hour once it gets clubbed, you know, so.
It shouldn't be this complicated.
It shouldn't be, but.
Unfortunately. The one thing we did talk about, Chief and I did talk about, one of the things that we could do that actually it doesn't cost a lot is to get a chip reader. That way, if it's got a chip, maybe it got off its collar or something happened where it was able to tear its collar off, but it's, if it's got a chip, then at least the chip can get read.
If they, because some, yeah, some.
And yep, some do. Most times the vets recommend that, and so most dogs are chipped that are, you know, go in for their regular visits. And so if we had a chip reader, that would make it a lot, a little bit simpler from the standpoint that we could identify the owner, as long as the information's updated, we hope, then at least we can track them down that way and, you know, get the dog back to where they need to be. But, you know, like Craig and I were talking, eight out of 10 maybe, we know, they, we know who the owners are, they know where these dogs belong type of thing, but it's the, you know, the one-third that you get every year that there's no, no chip, no tags, nothing, and they're running around, you know, maybe getting into somebody's garbage or tearing up somebody's flowers and, you know, we're getting complaints because the residents are calling us and, yeah, it's unfortunately, like Chief said, it's, it would be nice if it were just a very simple, we'll throw up a kennel at wastewater and be done with it.
Well, what would happen if we do that?
We have to charge enough money to, I don't know if we'd ever make our costs back.
If we end up having no options, I mean, we really don't want to be around an alley every time we pick up a cat or a dog, right?
Cats are now being excluded from our, our, our policy and ordinance for pickup.
Okay, good.
Unless they're wearing a collar with their city tag on it.
Yep, if they have a tag, we'll get them to their owner, but otherwise, because cats are kind of a different, the problem is, is there's a lot more density of them out and about. They tended, you know, cats just.
Yeah, they're out and about a lot.
They're out and about a lot, so it would be very difficult to do that.
And somewhere in the city of Melrose, there's a cat bar, and in the bathroom in that cat bar, my address, my wife's name, you come here, you'll get fed like a king. We've got, we've got street cats all around, she feeds them, so.
It's on the way, I've seen it.
So I don't know, we'll probably wait till we hear from Leadstone, get a response from them, see if they have any, otherwise.
I think we'd look into that, and then also, I guess, I would, this is with the wastewater supervisor, that if we do end up constructing something down there, that we have in mind possible expansion, so we don't put something up and then a year later have to either move it or, or change because of, you know, working down.
Shouldn't be more than a 10 by 12 temporary storage shed, I wouldn't think, with maybe some fencing or something or something, right?
Yeah, Tim was going to slide us into a building that had a bunch of pipes, I don't know what it's, it's all there. We stored a bunch of bikes and at one point, so it was adequate size, it just doesn't have ventilation, proper lighting. So it, I mean, can you throw a Schaefer fan in there for ventilation, probably, you know, and maybe a small window?
Sure, there's a decent-looking fish hole so we could pick out the lights on it, windows that open, stuff like that. Honestly, that'd be a pretty nice dog house.
Yeah, I, it's, like I said, it's not that our department's against it, it's just, for the work that, we didn't realize how much the vet clinic actually was doing on, on our behalf or for the service for the citizens or these dog owners, it was, it was surprising to see once you start looking into it. So their $16 a day they were charging, they earned their money, that's for sure.
The other thing that we talked about was giving, because right now, if you pick up somebody's dog, they don't pay anything other than the boarding charge for, or they didn't pay anything other than the boarding charge at the, that clinic, you know, incentivize them for a higher fine, because right now, I think it's after the third time you pick it up, it's 50 bucks or something. What if the first time that you pick this dog up, you charge them right away? Alexandria, for example, is at $75 every time they pick up a dog, plus it's an additional $15 a day to have it boarded.
We still run into where we're going to put it, though.
Right, exactly.
And we, our dog, running a large citation is $50 for the first three violations, jumps to 100 for the next three, and then at the seventh one, we revoke your license, so essentially you can't have the animal anymore in town. But it's rare that the ones that license have those issues because they care enough to license their pet and keep an eye on it.
Are you looking for anything from us?
Well, it's, part of it is, is just to keep you informed, and we'll continue to work with the vet clinic and see what we can get, come up with that, but I don't know that, we may need some direction or may need to just step forward and do these things. My area, like I said, my area concern is the consistency for any of the departments, especially ours, to do this correctly, and I don't know what ramifications that has if we have an animal rights group saying that you're not doing the proper exercise for your kennel dogs, blah, 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 blah. You know, as you extremes.
I think at that point, if you get an animal rights group in here, we just say, okay, we're not picking any of them up unless they are a threat to the public. And I'm going to see what the reaction is, because, you know, do you want us to care for them in our fashion or just let them go? It's, you know. Sorry, it's a little more complicated than it should be, but keep us informed.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
So at this point, I believe unless we can't find city tags, we'll probably be just allowing dogs to continue to run until we can get an answer from the vet clinic or until.
And if anybody's watching or watched the council meeting has a great idea, feel free to share it. You know, there, there might be somebody that picks up on it or reads the article that Carol's going to put in the paper about it that wants to help out and.
And I'm assuming that with all the spare time you have, that you're going to kind of start trying to formulate some sort of a, a plan, possibly to wastewater treatment plan that if necessary, we can implement in a couple of months.
And we can try the idea of posting, see if there's community members that would be willing to figure out the liability side, I guess, when it's all said and done kind of thing. It's probably more their homeowner's situation than anything in reality, but.
I guess, you know, as soon as they sign the paper, I'm taking all the responsibility for this animal. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, that you put the liability on that, correct? I mean, you go buy a dog from some private homeowner and you bring it home and it bites you, you really can't sue the person that you bought it from.
What would be the situation? So, you know, you keep out the street and then picks up something in your kennel and now it's your fault, it's your responsibility or, that bill or something, it's, it's a lawsuit and it's, that clinic, there is insurance involved because they, they're listed as, have, going on basis. It's a serious, we need to find sources, it's, they're talking to me, it's, there's insurance, we definitely know, it's true to our company, if you're going to start with animals, there's, there's somebody who's upset, they love your pet, they have a license and came back soon.
Bonding bill update?
Enough on that subject?
I think so.
All right. New business. See, hang on.
Under old business still, Tony, we're on the bonding bill, which is AF.
Bonding bill, AF.
So at this time, there's not been a formal, a final bill brought forth regarding, the session isn't completed, but the news that we currently have is both in the Senate version and the House version of the bonding bill. There is $3.5 million that has been allocated to the city of Melrose for the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. This is 2.25 million short of the request that was made, but we are working through changes to see what we can cut from the project itself, and we may have other sources of funding that we're going to be looking at. So it is something that the PUC will be discussing at their regular meeting on Monday, so I'll keep you apprised of that, but that's what we know at this time. There's no action that is required, I just wanted you to be aware of where we were at in that process.
Okay. New business, 9A City Minister of Winter, received a request from the Senior Center Board to reopen the senior center.
So when the city center offices closed on March 16th, the senior center, being part of the city center building, was closed as well. We reopened city center on June 1st, however, the senior center was not reopened at that time, and that was based on the guidance from the state of Minnesota. The most recent guidance that we have from the state talks specifically about assisted living facilities and other types of facilities, but it doesn't address senior centers that may be housed inside other buildings, such as a public building like what we have. So I was talking to several of my colleagues in the area, and there are several of them that are looking to open their senior centers on a limited basis, and I have been requested to bring this before the council because the senior center board would like us to consider allowing them to utilize their senior center downstairs. I will tell you that there was deep, deep cleaning that was done in that senior center right after we had closed down the offices. It has been repainted and there was some significant electrical work that had to be done, and that has all been done and upgraded in that particular part of the building. So we currently operate under a COVID-19 preparedness plan for my, for staff that are here, and so I would recommend that if you were going to be looking at opening the senior center back up, that it would have to follow under the same guidelines that we have to have for a preparedness plan for the staff that is here, which means that they cannot have more than 10 people at a time be down there. There's extra cleaning that has to happen, there's health screening questions that would have to be asked, that type of thing. Also, if there is a way, and this might be, Scott's might have to help us or have us, help us with this, but I would say that we would want some sort of a contract or an agreement that basically says that they hold the city harmless if a senior were to contract COVID. That's where I'm at with it, and I told Ms. Pullman, who's the president of the senior center, that I would bring it forth to the council to make a decision.
Do you have any idea, are they thinking like getting together for meals, card playing? Any idea what?
The two, the three main pushes that they are looking for is there, two gentlemen that come in and play pool twice a day. There is an exercise group that comes in, they all have their own, they all have their own weights, they have everything, their, their names are labeled on their own things. So there, I believe they exercise two to three times a week. There is a group of quilters, and I don't know how that works, because I don't know if they can keep a six-foot distance between them. They do get together for meals, but that would be a little bit more of a challenge because they have a soup, a Wednesday soup that they did once a month, which by the way was very successful and was a great thing for the community, the community really liked it, but that would go beyond the threshold of the 10 people that would be allowed.
Yeah, and I guess, and, and I don't understand how well the bug transmits, but, you know, if we're passing cards amongst each other, there are many hands touching many cards, and I think we would also want to encourage mask usage if possible.
On that note, if, you know, if everyone sanitized their hands correctly prior to playing cards, theoretically, the cards would not be infected.
This is true.
But I have no problem opening a senior center. I think they are all, you know, well-informed of the dangers. If, you know, everybody knows the risks of transmitting it and containing it and whatever, getting it. There are a ton of people out there that are suffering from being lonely.
Yep.
Especially seniors. You think about the nursing home, you know, they can't, I don't know if they're allowing visitors now, but for like a couple of months, family couldn't go and see their, their mom or dad. I mean, it's, you know, they couldn't come out of the rooms type of thing. It's really a depressing thing for a lot of seniors, and, you know, a lot of them are kind of, I don't know, some of my relatives are like, you know what, if you're not going to live life the way you want to live life, then, you know, with family and friends and stuff like that, then you're, you're not as well off as taking a few minor risks, getting together and playing cards or having a meal together, whatever. So, you know, considering the liability waiver type of thing, I'm, we could do that. I'm all for opening it up and letting them to get together.